Welcome everyone to the regular meeting of council for Monday, June 8, 2025. The, we are meeting in the council committee room at the city hall and you can also join us by via Zoom. A live meeting and the committee of the whole meeting will follow immediately after the close council meeting and we will reconvene at six o'clock again for the regular council meeting. You can join the webinars on the city's YouTube site at trail.ca/ youtube.cn. The first item on the agenda is called the meeting to order and I will move on to adoption of the agenda. And thank you, Councilor Benson, for making the motion and is there a second or please, Councilor Martin, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. We have a resolution to resolve into the committee of the whole and if someone could make that motion please, Councilor Martin and a second or Councilor Hanson, all those in favor. Thank you very much. So we do have a delegation here today and Brianna, I'll let you introduce everyone. You are from Portis and you're here to present a review on the advanced metering infrastructure project. Thank you, I'll let you go ahead.
Wonderful, thank you. It's pleasure to be here everyone. My name is Brianna Yur, I'm a community relations liaison on Forest BC's advanced metering infrastructure project. With me personally, I have William Hyde, manager of community indigenous relations and Jennifer Dachl, who is a community indigenous relations liaison here in Greece. We also have online with us today Darren Julian, who is our AMI project director and Joel Lindsay, who is a product lead in technology. So I did hand out, we had presentations handed out to all of you so you can follow along as I go. Today I will be providing information on Forest BC's gas, advanced metering infrastructure project and fully referred to it as AMI for short. We know of our names at Forest. I'll also be talking about what our customers can expect from the different upgrades that we will be doing to our meters as a part of this project and how we will, how we will be communicating with customers and how we can support the city of Trail as we work through our product. So starting with a little bit about Forest BC, we are one of British Columbia's largest energy providers. We serve over one million customers here in BC through a variety of energy sources, including electricity, natural gas and renewable natural gas, among others. We own and operate for hydroelectric gas here in Greece, which as you all know. We also own approximately 7,000 kilometers of electric transmission and distribution power lines and over 51,000 kilometers of transmission and distribution gas lines. We directly employ approximately 2,700 British Colombians, including those who work here at our Trail contact center and our two internal offices. And our business intersects with 150 different indigenous traditional territories. Where we serve 135 municipalities in the province and 58 first nations communities. So that's a little bit about Portis as a whole. And now, so the advanced metering infrastructure project, or AMI, as I'll be referring to it as, is the most substantial upgrade to our gas metering infrastructure in over 100 years. The goal of the project is provide an enhanced customer experience and to do this, we are upgrading to wireless advanced meters that will allow for additional benefits to customers, including more information about energy consumption as well as additional safety improvements to our gas distribution system. More than 1 million Forest BC customers will have their current gas meter upgraded to a digital wireless meter or retrofitted so that the existing meter can communicate wirelessly with Forest BC. These upgrades and retrofits will take place across British Columbia over the next several years throughout the project lifespan. Next, I'm going to be speaking more about the residential gas meter. So for most residential customers, they will receive a new advanced meter, which looks and operates a little differently than the previous legacy meter. At about one third of the size, the new meter utilizes ultrasonic technology to measure safely and accurately the gas used at the premise. The meter will then send this information back to Forest BC through a private wireless network, meaning we will no longer need to access customer properties regularly to read the meter. That is that address is where the meter is connected to the network. As a part of the AMI project, Forest BC and our authorized contractors will be installing bypass valves on the piping systems that attach the meter to the distribution system and to the home. This will increase customer convenience as we'll no longer need to make customer appointments and shut off gas service when we're doing maintenance or replacements of gas meters. The new advanced meter will also have additional safety measures and diagnostics, including tampering and theft detection and a number of safety alarms. In the event we are made aware of an emergency such as a wildfire or a flood, the new meter will have the capability to locally shut off the gas flow at the location of the meter. So this will become an additional tactic for us in emergency response in addition to those that we already use today. To enable the meter to communicate wirelessly back to Forest BC, we have been busy coordinating the installation of a private wireless network. This will, this low bandwidth network is being installed across the province on existing infrastructure and will be used by both the new advanced meter and any meter that has been moved. When it comes to industrial customers, we will also be completing retrofits on those meters. These larger meters for commercial and industrial customers will receive a retrofit with what is known as a smart point radio transceiver, which will allow the larger meters to transmit gas consumption back to Forest BC. The new smart point will also have a built-in tampering and theft detection as well. Now, probably the most important information for all of you is when we are deploying from the city of Trail. So the deployment of gas meters will commence in the city of Trail, starting next Monday, the week of June 15. The, some residents will have already received a notice by postcard that the exchange at their premises is taking place soon. Our contractor for the region is Metercore Inc. and all vehicles driven by our contractor will be marked with Forest BC decals as well. So the current timelines for when Metercore expects to be working in the city of Trail and surrounding communities, they are listed on the slides I invited. Notably, for the city of Trail, we will be deploying in three separate windows of time, the first of which starts up next Monday, followed by a second window in fall of 2025 and then we will return for a third window in spring of 2027. We've also recently updated our website to include an interactive map that will allow residents to go on and view when communities will be up for meter exchanges. This is all information based on our current deployment standards. That can be found at forestbc.com/mealgasmeters. So, what customers can expect from us during this work? Our goal is really to communicate upfront with customers in advance of working in their neighborhood. So to do this, we have included multiple tactics in with the hope that residents will receive notification through one of those various methods. Letters, automated phone calls and local notice boards are three of the tactics that we are going to be using as we deploy meters in neighborhoods. Those customers will not need to book appointments with Forest BC to have their meter exchange. We will be using a seasonal approach to the appointment. Now what that will do is, in the summer months when gas usage is quite low, we'll be going into a neighborhood and exchanging meters house by house. In the winter months, when gas usage is higher, we will be booking appointments as we did prior to the project. During the meter exchange, which will take approximately one hour to complete, a customer may temporarily have their gas service shut off to allow for the safe exchange of the meter. During that time, if the resident is home at the time of the exchange, the technician will be able to relight any impacted gas appliances right then and there. If the resident was not home at the time of the exchange, say it was the summer months, what we will do is we will be leaving behind information so the customer knows exactly who to contact to get their appliances relight. We do ask that customers clear paths to their property and provide safe access to the meter. If there's fences or lock gates that inhibit access, we just ask the customers to call us ahead of time and advise how we can maintain that access. Okay, so we understand that residents often go to their local government with questions about work taking place in their community. So we're more than happy to offer materials that direct residents back to the CC should they have any questions or comments on the project. We're fully staffed to be able to respond to those and looking to take any of the talk of the city of Trail when it comes to curious residents or customers of ours. And that does conclude my presentation on the advanced metering infrastructure project. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Is there any questions from council? Oh, has Councilor Benson, thank you, through the chair. You, you've mentioned that they'll have alarms on them. Is there any like preventative maintenance that the users will need to do to check those or?
No, all of those alarms will come back to us at Forest BC and we'll do all of the monitoring to ensure the meters operating safely and reliably.
This will eliminate the need then for the meter reader to physically show up on the site. How many meter readers will be affected and is there a plan to, first of all, are they contracted or are they employees of Portis? And is there a plan to kind of realign them or reassign them?
Yeah, maybe I can, I can take a stab at that one and Darren may want to jump in as well, but right now they are contractors, mostly it's a company called Old Meter. We are working with our contractors and our union partners for employee impacts. We haven't quite fully analyzed or at least come to a conclusion about what those impacts are going to be, but it's something we're definitely working closely with them because we do know, it's not the first time we've gotten that question, we do know it's an important part of it.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, Councilor Martin.
Thank you, through the chair. You mentioned in your presentation that there's an opportunity if there's a wildfire, for instance, or emergency that you can shut the meters off. Is this similar to the public safety power shut-off? That you will do areas like, which areas like, remember how they wanted to, or you guys, the electricity wanted to do, for instance? Is this going to be the same, at least if there's an event coming?
No, this is a different scenario. So yeah, this provides local access, so say that this is an example, I guess a house fires is kind of a good example. They're able to locally shut off that one area for any qualified activity ones.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Benson, just one more question through the chair. And it might be really silly, but why would someone steal one of these units?
It's more gas theft actually.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so permission of gas theft can be monitored through this.
Mr. McClure has a question.
Yeah. Thanks Brianna for your presentation and for coming today. Two questions for you, one is if I'm hearing correctly, if I have a bypass on my system already, you won't need to come back and relay mine because the, the gas will not be interrupted. So and, and you've done many of these at many homes.
Correct.
And so that's one of those factors that may not cause anybody any change at all as far as what's happening with it showing up. Maybe not seeing that big unit and just having a smaller rectangle.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And my second question is, is by chance did you bring me any pamphlets or anything like that that I can put down at city hall here while you're here?
I did not.
Oh my goodness, I sort of should have asked you off line on it.
I'm more than happy to mail them over.
This was curious, maybe I'll get them from tomorrow. If you have.
Just gonna mail them, they're in Colorado.
Yes.
Yeah, I give them too far.
Thank you.
Thanks, Colin.
Okay, I just have a quick question. These meters look a lot smaller than the ones we have right now. What would the size be? Do you have the dimensions?
That's a good question. I don't have the dimensions on hand, but we're more than happy, I know I, I emailed it up before, so I'm more than happy to send information over to you.
Okay, and you mentioned that you will be starting next Monday with the installations and then into the fall of 2025 and then back again in the spring of 2027? Okay, so we'll be going a full year without any activity?
Yeah, it'll be, we're looking at a number of weeks, I think it's approximately eight weeks that we'll be working in the community and then we'll be pausing the deployment of new meters and then we'll come back in the fall, do that again and then pause for a period of time once again and then come back in 2027.
Okay.
And for those that would have an, an area like in our, you know, as I think you can, our municipal structure, we've got municipalities and we have these other areas, an area B and an area A that we have a real trail address, would they be able to look on the, on the map and kind of figure out when they scrolled into the kind of less rural areas of the municipalities and when they might get a change?
The map on our website is very high level, so it is broken up into municipalities for the most part, regional districts are not necessarily identified on that map. But if you have a trail address included by, you go with the trail municipality when it comes to reading the deployment title for your community. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. I am not seeing any other questions. No, okay, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you could be here.
Thanks very much for having me.
Thank you if you have any, any sooner replies.
Yes, great, thank you.
Hey, we will move on to our departmental reports. And the first one I have up is department manager.
Yeah, Mayor, Council. Through the chair, I'll just provide a brief update on the events at the airport currently. So starting off with some passenger numbers. So in May, we had total of 1,868 travelers, which is a good number. It's up 274 travelers from this time last year. That being said, as of last Saturday, the one that just passed, Pacific Coastal is now putting on an additional flight on Saturdays, which brings us to two full flights daily, all week long. Through the summer schedule, I think they're going to reevaluate again come the fall, see, see what kind of numbers that they have and not. But the numbers are definitely up, as, as I said, compared to last year and month after month here now, the numbers are steadily increasing by up to 200, 250 travelers from month to month since pretty much January, so, so the numbers are good. We're currently still awaiting an apply from B cap regarding the application of our grant towards our master plan. They were stating somewhere mid-May timeframe, but we haven't heard anything, it can come anytime. And once we receive it, we'll have to put together an RFP so that we can get this moving. I have a kind of a timeframe that I'm looking at for late summer, early fall. It'll, it'll take probably around two to three months to complete a master plan. That means having the, whatever consultancy that we choose to go with based on the RFP coming. They do assessments, everything from impact assessments to, to studies of, you know, the businesses, the tourists in the community, kind of a whole package and then put that master plan together, which I'm hoping for if, if the findings are going to work out somewhere in that September, October timeframe. And really that's all I have for the moment, so I'll loudly answer any questions that come to me now.
Councilor, any questions? So I just have a quick one. Are you prepared for the fire season? What have you done to get the airport prepared for it or have you had the opportunity to even look at that at this time?
So the way the fire season works for us primarily, we're, we're, we're a fueling stop when it comes to fire season for, for DC wildfire organizations that do fight the fires. So we have a few capabilities on hand. We have a property on land on hand that if they require to have tents set up and, and you know, those kinds of things like staging areas, we have access on our property or our property's trimmed and mowed. So we, we always have plenty of space for that. I had reached out to the ministry and they contacted me in the spring stating that we're available to help out wherever we can. So it's really a matter of a request coming in and then us actioning that request based on our availabilities and our amenities that we have.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, yes. You know, just watching what's going on around us and kind of wondering what our little airport did to get ready.
Yeah, and, and the big thing is having fuel on hand and we work closely with security fuels, so about a castor. So we can have fuel delivered from, from the main fueling station, which is in Alberta and I think it's Fort Saskatchewan within, within a day. And if we run low on fuel, Castle Guard is able to help us out, spread fuels with having a truck deliver more fuel if it comes to that point where so many human operations are happening, so. But we have full tents right now, so.
Great, okay, thank you. I don't know if any council has any questions, so, okay, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Communications and I believe that Tracy's going to do the report to him for communications.
Yes, thank you. Chair, for the communications department, happy to report that we've had no negative communications on both of our demolishing building projects or this TMC projects. Generally, people are just excited to see something happening and, you know, people are watching and excited that we've got a big project happening. Messages going out through our local media outlets with radio advertisements in place directing the public to our webpage for those two projects if they need any information. The other thing to report was the billboards are, we used to call them info kiosks. So the one located over the Victoria Street Bridge at the Second Avenue intersection and the one by the pedestrian bridge, both of those have been updated lately. The one on the Victoria Bridge is advertising for the Trail Regional Airport currently. This will later be updated with the information for Music in the Park in late June. And the one by the pedestrian bridge, we have updated it with some WildSafe BC Bear Smart information. So those two were just recently done and top priorities in the communications department are still the annual report completion, webpage, RFP and candidate data. So that's what we have. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, I may not be able to answer them, but I'll get an answer. Any questions from council?
Okay. Thank you, Tracy, and you're up again for the general record services.
Thank you, through the chair. So in regards to bylaw enforcement, the city has now completed the cleanup on the city-owned alley behind the 7-Eleven and is now working on the residence that is located right next to that alley, looking for some compliance on our unsited premises by law there. The bylaw officer also met with the regional and area manager of 7-Eleven, who have also been helping to clean up the area to deal with loitering and wildlife tractors. And they've recently installed security lighting and made enhancements to their dumpster enclosure area. And so that, we're really excited, we also all got free certificate plans, so that's really cool. And we are currently working with a couple of, looks like abandoned travel trailers in the Glen Mary Townhouse location. And also we removed an abandoned vehicle at the Botched Pit area. Keeping an active patrol on our encampments and ensuring cleanliness and the health of the residents in those areas. On a corporate services level, we've been busy with inquiries around development, subdivision and zoning. We'll be very happy when we hire a planner, because it seems to be ramping up. We have increased issues with parking due to all the projects in the downtown core, so that's the medical building, our big project with the demos and the cell court roof projects, we've had parking issues have come up more frequently. We've now hired four new guards at the RCMP detachment and we're just waiting for a security clearance there. And we will also be hiring some new slide attendants at the pool as we promoted our slide attendance to lifeguards because they have now completed all their training. So, busy. Any questions?
Great. I see no questions, so thank you very much. On to the museum, architects and visitors and their managers.
Through the chair, just to note that we will be closed from 9:30 to 11:30 on Friday morning to support some library professional development. They are hosting the Kootenay Library Federation Annual Conference and there's some exciting committee happening there, with bringing in a wonderful executive coach that some of us have had the pleasure of using. She's fantastic and Samantha's anticipating thirty participants, it's six libraries coming, so it's great to show off the building. But it's significantly easier when we close for those couple hours, so our work will be shifted a little bit. The tech has allowed us to use the techy for the center for our hot store leave on Friday, which we cannot cancel. That doesn't happen. So Dan being a tech has been really kind allowing us and the chamber of course, to allow us to use that space, which is great and it's accessible with the elevator. So we're, we're kind of excited to shift, shift locations a little bit. Just to report a little bit, the Historical Society has finished its strategic plan. So we'll do our best to support them in some community engagement exercises coming up, hopefully. Yeah, just to sort of redefine themselves in the community now that they're not necessarily operating in the museum, but they're certainly heavily involved with owns of the collection and hopefully still custodians and keepers of, of local history. And Councilor Martin was a part of that process as well for portion of that, which was, which was great. We have been invited to participate in the dementia awareness gala, which is happening at the end of the month. And we're looking to actually collaborate with the Beaver Valley Ponder Historical Society to have just a small table and how we can use objects in our collection to sort of trigger nostalgia and memory. So it's just at the beginning portion of that event, but we were really pleased to be invited to participate in that. This event, there'll be one of two, it is supported as well by UBC Okanagan. This one is geared more towards caregivers and how caregivers can help support folks suffering with dementia. And I think the next one will be more tailored to the actual patients. So it's kind of a nice event, it's at Mountain Soul Winery, so they're going to treat, they're going to treat people. So we're looking at ways we can help support caregivers in the future with maybe some programming that includes some guided tours. Carefully crafted, maybe some shadowing with, with caregivers to see just how best to do that. They're not, it's not a typical tour when you're doing with those sorts of issues. So we're really excited to be asked to participate in that. Programming's doing really, really well, we're in programming week, we hosted Glen Mary Grade Seven last week. Addison and our summer student Esri are working diligently on our deaccessioning project. So we've tentatively got our, the Historical Society Storage Unit, Janelle slated for what, what needs, what needs to go. Again, there's a, there's a whole process to that, so we're hoping that that will no longer be an expense to them by the end of this year, which is great. It's going to be hard to see some things go, but some of these things haven't seen the light date in a very long time. And to be a good collector and a good steward is to be really responsible and to consider all of the aspects of being a collector, which include our financial capacity to do it, so. Yeah, that's really exciting and they're working hard on our sleep hall storage right now. What else do we have here? Our visitors are, we're doing really well, visitor centers seen an uptick. I just wanted to give you an idea of where people are coming from, a lot from Washington, California, Calgary, Cranbrook, Nova Scotia, Vancouver Island, lots from the Nelson area, these are folks that are coming in mainly for medical appointments and they are dropping someone off and they want somewhere to kind of be and enjoy. Vancouver and we've had one from Campbell River as well, they, we had a big Washington group in for a Porsche tour. They stopped in Trail, you know, the, the car club in Trail, the Corvette, Corvette club, but this was a, this was a Porsche club. Fancy. One thing we are hearing is the RV parking signage isn't great. And often people will park there, they can still pick up the wifi. It's just past the, the crosswalk, the laneway crosswalk, not the, not the rainbow crosswalk, but traveling the crosswalk along Jubilee Park and sometimes the communities in Bloom will use it for their, for their, for their trucks. So it would be great if we could maybe enhance that signage a little bit more. I can talk to Sandy about that and a ton of requests for the RV park. So do you know that we're looking at all the places on the internet where our RV park is still advertised, it's open? A lot of them access these broader databases, so we have to find out who's hosting those. Like RV EZ is using a different database and they populate it sort of like an RSS, RSSB. So we're slowly going through all those little places because it's amazing where people will find a listing, even if it's not on our page, right? They'll find it somehow, so we're, that's taking a little bit of time. And lastly, we met today to begin our planning for National Day for Truth and Reconciliation and we've got nearly everybody back on board, which is really exciting. Which is really exciting. Um, we had. Uh, from the year, last year we had three hundred and twenty five participants and that was almost a hundred, it was a hundred and fifty over the year before. So it's a growing event and people want to learn and we've um, got some great ideas on the table, so. Um, yeah, I think that's it. Oh, yeah. Maybe right now, it's good.
Yeah, that's great. Any um, questions or comments from council, council Benson?
Thank you through the chair. Will you deaccession something?
Where did I go? To. Does it go back to the?
It don't either. Typically does not go back to the donor, especially if we've issued a tax receipt. Um, and it's you're you're sort of um, doubly compensating someone. Um, what we try to do is find other repositories or institutions that um, would be willing to take it for whatever reason. Um, uh, in my email lists or through the B C Museums Association, I get about four or five of these emails a day saying anyone's wanting. Anyone's wanting these, you know, maybe for a didactic collection or just an exhibition collection purely. Um. Just because something's old doesn't mean we keep it, so um, yeah, ideally it doesn't go back to the donor just from an from an ethical standpoint, right? Um, but yeah, we always try and rehouse it. Yeah.
Just further that through the chair, could you sell it? Like go on Marketplace and uh. Is that ethical or is that, it's not, okay?
Um, some museums have done it to uh, generate income. Uh, you'll see large art museums in the states, you know, some of the big, big names do that. Um, they're selling and buying to just increase their own, you know, coffers. But no, that wouldn't be something we would necessarily encourage the Historical Society to set up a table outside the museum and. Well, that's my grandmother's, you know, it's something we typically try to avoid doing. Um, there is an option for the thrift store. I'd like to see it obviously get go back and be repurposed. Um, a lot of these things are still work or or, you know, they're fine. Um, but no, I would not advise that.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No, okay, thank you so much, Tara. I think we, thanks for being here today. Um, next up, we have the information technology and Dwayne, our information systems coordinator.
Yeah, hey, everybody. Pleasure to see you again. Um. We do have some news for you today. Uh, as you know, the last time we talked about the F twelve service management company that was doing an assessment for our information technology. They completed that assessment and covered a range of areas like security and infrastructure and governance, data management. Uh, productivity tools. And. For the most part, we have a very solid. I T environment. Um, what we're lacking in. Uh, is I T resources to enhance that, to uh. Make sure, I mean, these are the get done and get done. And to develop the I T environment more than what it is today. In particular, the. Interest is in the Microsoft Office environment, so the. Microsoft product line will answer the a core purchasing theme as we move forward. Uh, we have since signed a contract with F twelve to do service I T management. And what that's gonna look like initially is they will be the help desk. So every user in the city will be able to contact them for I T related issues. That will be their initial point of contact. It'll take a number of months for the company to come up to speed in terms of all the products that we support and the environment we're in. Um, and Brian and I'll be that uh, or team that leads this group. In getting that knowledge. So that's uh, what's coming down the pipe and I have to answer any questions, but.
You want to see any questions?
Excellent.
Thank you so much, Dwayne, for being here today.
Thank you, miss. Thanks.
Hey, Mr. McClure, who are that's chief financial officer report.
Yeah, um. So, you know, as much as the the big ticket items have been taken care of as far as. Getting the financial plan and a lot of financial statements through service and cleanup. And we will see that as far as reports coming to council, in particular, June twenty third. As we finish the Sophie report, which is a stable of financial information, I think that council's aware of that. Uh, we are required by legislation to provide. For a start, um, all of councils' remuneration and whatever expenses that they had incurred during the year. And then uh, employees that earned over seventy five thousand dollars and the expenses that they incurred. Not only that, but we are to uh, show or list out any vendor that we spent over twenty five thousand dollars with. And that includes in a separate area if there was a grant, so if we provided grants to entities that those are broken out from that, but. Uh, you know, it's a really good tool. It's a transparency tool. Uh, one of the factors is if you saw that there was a hundred thousand dollars spent at Panico Pizza, that might be something that the public may not get to see, but if they saw that on the list, they could come here very quickly and say. What's going on and they would see me and say I can understand what's happening. Um, but in the same boat, um. You you know, it can be uncomfortable for staff, uh, and some of them, we try to make sure that they're aware that, you know, the names will be out there and the the salary list is, it's not common, but it is a public sector. Uh, responsibility and so, uh, you know, we obviously uh, will have it. Here at kept council table and be on our website. All the previous years are there, I think it's last four or three or four. Uh, but all municipalities. Any universities, school districts, do they have a maybe lens of that, but there, all of these that get our public sector tax dollars, we'll report on what they've done. With the funding and this is uh, again, it's a good tool for transparency and I think it's valuable. Uh, the annual report is also another one, doesn't need the. The Sophie report does need to come to council and and be sort of received and then we sign it off and then that is set off to the province they require those. However, the annual report, uh, just that we bring it forward and. And it's sometimes hard to think that we are, you know, eighteen months back from January first of twenty twenty four. But it is that opportunity to celebrate what's happened in twenty twenty four. There's a lot of good things that went on and it also includes the financial statements. So that will be a report that I think you've seen before, but it has an opportunity for the different. Leaders of our organization to speak up about what's happened in their apartment. There's also a message usually from the mayor and myself. And again, something that is mandated by the province to be done, uh, but it is also something that doesn't need to be. Put, you know, set down to a repository in the province like these other documents are. This one is just one that kind of stays on our website. Uh, I did note that and. Timing wise, we're not sure, but uh, council was aware that we. Had the tax rate bylaw. Approved earlier than normal this year. Or that was in fear of what was gonna happen with B C, um, sorry, B C, but but the postal strike potential. And uh, we do note that. Having it a couple weeks earlier, we're actually a bit earlier ahead. We're about thirteen percent collected. Uh, over previous year. Uh, so again, sometimes not about to get those notes that are really against some cash flow in. Uh, but I would also expect that most people don't pay until, if they haven't paid, they should be waiting until the last couple of days. But it is a positive on our side and I mean, again, that that percentage actually takes two hundred dollars in our bank account that um, that is good for for the city on positive interest. Uh, we hopefully will have some information on the results of our deputy CFO posting that we want out and uh, we. Going through that process and hope to have something out shortly uh, to inform the council whether the community. Well, that's, you know, what what did they result of that is, we're not there yet, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but.
Any questions? I don't see, no, nobody online. What's her, um, handsome is fine, okay? Thank you, Mr. McClure. Okay, on to our staff reports. We have the bylaw enforcement report from May twenty twenty five. And uh, the recommendation is council consider and resolve to receive for information. Is there someone that would like to move that? Also, Tyler, thank you. All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, question if I may. Um, on it, I noticed the new license says issue was one was for. Local industrial that's doing that. Is that um, normal if it's a company from out of town if they're doing a big project? Okay, cool.
If you get a.
This is a. Yeah. Yeah.
It it can be one of those things we also have to check whether or not they're gonna get one following year. Are you doing more work here? Because that sometimes can be one of those like, hey, here's your business license last year and sometimes you don't get responses and that's one of the things that has been really great with our. Um, by law officers sort of going through those listings and kind of finding out, oh, hey, this is wasn't one off and and sort of not. Like clogging them up where they're foreseeable and or us expecting them to.
Right.
Because if you're here, yes, it's usually for the year when we have some of those other entities that are outside of the community.
We also have the intermunicipal business license as well, which is a regional license, which a lot of contractors.
Okay, yeah.
And so that again gets you one, one place to purchase that and then it covers, I believe, basically fruit.
Frost and work field, fruit, bear montrose and trout.
Nice.
Well, yeah, so it's very helpful for those that do uh, work in the city.
Okay, so we have someone moved in, council button moved in, all those in favor. And that was Karen, I'm doing that, that's great, thank you. Um, unsightly premises of eighty four ninety four highway twenty two A and Miss Lutti, now get you to um, bring that forward.
Thank you, your worship, through the chair. Um, as you can see from the reporting before you, we have another unsightly premise coming forward. This one is located in the Morita. Area, um. It is, uh, as you can see from the photos, um, quite messy. Uh, as well as they require some work on the vegetation around the property. Um, there's also a dog extra excrement that's causing quite a lot of foul smell for adjacent property owners. Um, the property owner has been requested to do some work on the property, uh, has failed to do so, so being advanced to council today. For a resolution um, that they do so within thirty days. Um, otherwise the city would be in a position at that point to uh, undertake the work on their behalf. And uh, if not, uh, we are able to build that work back to the property owner and if unpaid, we can um, add it to taxes at the end of the year.
Okay, so the recommendation um, is before you for consideration. Is there someone that wants to move that? Council Butler, thank you. Uh, all those in favor? Thank you, that was Carrie.
And if I can add that uh, we will be requesting later uh, this evening that you um, pass the motion. To finalize this so that we can work on the properties and if they base it passes the city.
Okay. Thank you. Um, is there any other reports? That's not, okay. Uh, question period. Any questions?
I'm just sorry, I'm trying to get.
We have one person online.
Uh, if you are attending via online, if you'd like to use the raise hand function, if you have a question, please do so now. Saying none, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So uh. The next resolution is to rise from the committee of the whole and it is uh, that council consider resolve. To rise from the committee of the whole and this is someone to move that. Thank you, Council Benson and Council Martin, all those in favor. Carrie. Um, a resolution to exclude the public access to the public meeting until six o'clock P M and immediately convened into a closed session. The resolution is that pursuant to six, section ninety of the community charter. The public be excluded from this portion of the meeting as the subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter section ninety one A. Uh, community charter section ninety one L. And further that the public portion of the meeting be. Recessed until six o'clock P M and further that council immediately resolve into the closed portion of their meeting. So I'm gonna make that motion, please. Council Cashall and Secondar, Council Butler, all those in favor? That was carried unanimously, thank you.